There's our camera. Okay, good.
Good morning everybody and welcome to our regular board meeting this Tuesday November 4th, 2025. We will be going into closed session. Madam Clerk?
Closed session for today. Item one, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1 Conference at Legal Counsel Regarding Existing Litigation County of Calaveras versus Tuscornia Ranches Limited Partnership et al. Calaveras County Superior Court case number C or my two zero CB four five one one three.
Thank you. Is there any public comment regarding this? Seeing none? Is there any online?
We have no online public comment.
Thank you. We will now break for closed session and we'll be back at nine o'clock.
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome back to our meeting November 4th, 2025. Can we please stand for the pledge? Supervisor Stopper, will you lead us?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the Constitution of America. And to the republic which has served its purpose. I am proud, and grateful, to the people of this country.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Report out for today's closed session. Item one, pursuant to government code 54956.91, Conference of Legal Counsel regarding existing litigation, County of Calaveras versus Tascornia Ranches Limited Partnership at All, Calaveras County Superior Court case number 20CB45113. Board of action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you. We'll move on to Moon and staff announcements.
Sure. So, we presented Moon's brother last week, Whopper. So, this is the other half of Whopper. This is Moon. Moon is a neutered male Alaskan husky mix, and he's about a year old and probably about seventy. He's gained a little weight as under our care, but he's about seventy-two pounds now. He was brought in last, well, last week, he was, his brother and him were running loose and creating all kinds of shenanigans. But we brought them in, and all the pack is neutered, and on behalf of Focus, they neutered and spayed the whole pack, so that's a good thing. So, due to the loving care of staff, both pups are very sweet, you know, and very caring and giving. They get along with other animals. We still don't know about the cats yet, but they are both very affectionate and are a favorite, still a favorite with our volunteers. The dogs, of course, cannot be adopted together due to the litter mate syndrome, so that's something, if you are interested, a meet and greet is required if you have another pup at home. So, as I mentioned last week, the holiday season is upon us, and Animal Services will be holding our first event on Saturday, November 15th, at our shelter called Pets Giving. We do have the Pets Giving flyer on our website, and it's also rotating on our PowerPoint today. They will be kicking off a volunteer event, and we're very grateful for our volunteers. Pets Giving will be held from ten to two, along with our adoption event. And this actually kicks off our CCAS food and toy drive for our fostering community animals through the end of the year. Some of the items, as I mentioned before, which would be very helpful and what we're hopeful for, are canned and dry dog and cat and kitten foods, such as friskies, milk replacement for neonatal kittens. We get, hopefully, the kitten season's not gonna, we're kind of on the lower ebb tide of kitten season, but we do expect for it to kick about in April and May of this year, so it's just around the corner. With those neonatal kittens, we send them home with our volunteers and our fosters. They have to be fed every two hours, so it's a, it's a very large job to take on. We need cat litter, puppy pads, collars, indestructible dog toys, and cat toys. We also have an Amazon wishlist on our CCAS webpage, so if you use those, that would be great as well. Our dog volunteers gave six hundred and eighty-six hours of their time in October. I spoke with Cynthia this morning, and I couldn't quite get the cat hours yet. We've been a little short on our cat volunteers, but we'll get those to you on the next I spoke with Cynthia this morning and I couldn't quite get the cat hours yet. We've been a little short on our cat volunteers, but we'll get those to you on the next meeting. We took in twenty-four pups and then we had eight adoptions. And we also took in thirteen cats for the month of October. Now, this is big news, Focus event and also CCAS TV. This is support towards our Focus and our CCTV. They are groups that substantially, you know, assist our CCAS and our community. They help with spay and neuter. They help with some of our medical issues that we have when we are, you know, in a low crunch on our budget numbers. We have an event that's gonna take place. It's called Love Your Pet. It's starting now. It's a video and photo contest. So entries will be accepted starting November first through January thirty-first, and the award ceremony is February seventh. You can call two oh nine two eight six one nine one zero or email calaverascommunity@gmail dot com for more information. Winning photo and video will be aired on the Calaveras Community TV and published in the Pine Tree Net. So we do have some prizes. We have four fifty gifts, gift certificates, fifty dollars, two tickets to the Murphy Theater and two bottles of wine if you're over twenty-one. And prizes will be awarded to six category winners. So we're excited about that. Just want to share that information and I'll take any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none? Super. Thank you so much. See you, Moon. He's a lot calmer. Can I ask, how do you come up with the names? Was it?
It's, it's interesting how we come up with names. Next week, we'll be presenting, I think it's, is it Bella, right? I don't know. If we'll call them Phil.
Thank you. Ms. Munoz.
Good morning. Marcus Munoz, Director of Health and Human Services. So on October first, the federal government shutdown, the federal government shutdown affecting several programs. Amongst these programs was SNAP. SNAP is Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, which provides food assistance to low-income individuals and family. So SNAP is a hundred percent funded by the federal government and flows directly from the U.S. Treasury to CDSS. For Calaveras, this has impacted six thousand three hundred and fifty-two individuals. In terms of dollar, for the month of October, we issued one point two million dollars in benefits. So that, that's the impact of the federal shutdown for the month of November. A temporary restraining order was issued on Friday, requiring the USDA to issue benefits in full by Monday, which was yesterday, or partially by tomorrow, utilizing the SNAP reserves at the federal level. USDA chose to partially issue based on an issuance table because the amount in reserve did not meet the total monthly amount needed. Unfortunately, by using issuance tables, this will require additional system infrastructure in order for that specific purpose to go off of those tables, which could create more delays in the money reaching the individuals. So CDSS is assessing the timeline implications associated with using these tables and has requested that the use of a percentage, since the infrastructure is already there for a person to fill out. So our consortia, the California Welfare Directors Association, is anticipating, once the federal funds are made available, it will take approximately one to three weeks for benefits to be loaded on the cards. A flat percentage methodology, we'll see the least delay versus using the tables. We'll see the longer end of that timeline. So at HHSA, we are currently trying to reallocate funds into food and security through our CMCA division. We're also exploring other funding opportunities we may have in order for us to partner with schools, in order for us to partner with community partners to see if we can move money in order to address the food insecurity. We also recommend reaching out to the food banks, as there are several out there, but I know they are being impacted heavily at the moment.
Thank you very much for the update.
Thank you.
Are there any other staff announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on.
Chair, just on behalf of the Elections Office, may I share our elections? Thank you. Just a reminder to the community that today is Election Day. We have two official vote centers here in Calaveras County. Here at the Government Center, we are open to APM and also the Jenny Lynn Veterans Memorial Hall in Valley Springs. You can mail in your ballot, but please, if you choose to mail in your ballot, be sure to walk into the post office and have that post marked on today. You can also vote in person again at the two official locations and drop off your ballots at our Dropbox locations. We have several locations available throughout the county. Angels Camp, the Save Mart supermarket, Valley Springs at the Jenny Lynn Veterans Memorial Hall exterior. Here at the San Andreas Government Center, Copperopolis Payless Market inside the store. West Point Pizza Plus inside. Arnold, the Arnold Branch Library, and we have an exterior box. And we also have one in Mountain Ranch at Sender's Market inside the store. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on now to recognition and acknowledgements. Item two, please.
Item two, proclamation, Administrative Office, adopt a proclamation recognizing Auditor Controller Kathy Gomes for her service to the residents of Calaveras County and congratulating her on her retirement.
Pass the gavel over to Supervisor Topinelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So if I don't read this, can, she can't retire, is that correct? I'm asking County Council.
You can try that.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion in this. Oh, Kathy. Thank you for your service before I start reading this. You did a great job. All right. It's a proclamation honoring Auditor Controller Kathy Gomes for her service to the County of Calaveras, whereas Kathy Gomes began her service with the County of Calaveras in December nineteen eighty-nine, when she joined the Assessor's Office. Whereas in May of two thousand and eleven, she moved to the Auditor Controller's Office, first as an accountant auditor and then as assistant auditor controller. And whereas in November of two thousand and twenty-two, Kathy was elect, well, that, well, I was passing over one. In December twenty nineteen, Kath, the Board of Supervisors appointed Kathy to serve the remainder of the term of office as Auditor Controller. And whereas in November of two thousand and twenty-two, Kathy was elected by the people of Calaveras County to continue serving as Auditor Controller and has served in that role since that time. And whereas Kathy has notified the Board of her intent to retire from the county effective November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, she notified us again. Whereas Kathy's tenure in the county is an example of the finest caliber of public service, as she has served through multiple changes in the county leadership, a pandemic, disastrous winter storms, and uncertainty at all levels of government, and has met all challenges with consistency by fulfilling her mad dates as Auditor Controller and by doing what is best for her constituents. And I'll have to agree with that part of it. Whereas Kathy is a proud Calaveras resident, raising her four boys in Angels Camp. And her dedication to her family and her community shows her solid character and desire to serve others. As her time as steward of the county's finances displays her honesty, integrity, and commitment to the people of Calaveras. And whereas Kathy leads her department by her example and always directs her staff to challenge the easy answers, instead strive, is that correct? That's the way it's written. And instead strive to find the correct ones. Her loyalty and concern for her staff are evident in her encouragement of personal development and preparation of each person to succeed both in their work and personal life. Kathy has been recognized, commended, and awarded each year of her leadership by both the state and national organizations for excellence in reporting and financial statement preparation. And whereas for her many years of service, consistent leadership, and for improving the county of Calaveras in every step of her professional journey, we recognize and appreciate the honorable, honorable Kathy Gomes and congratulate her sincerely in her retirement. Kathy, do you have anything to say? This wasn't written.
Good morning, Chair, Board members, CEO, County Council, and all of you, including my staff. I just want to say it's been a pleasure mostly. There have been challenges and with staff and with support from the Board, we've been able to overcome them. And it's just been my honor to have been here as long as I have and for you guys to tolerate my presence here as long as you have. It's been a real thrill and I am looking forward to my retirement, so.
Well, we will certainly miss you tremendously. You've done such a great job. And you've always, anytime I've contacted you on an issue or wanted to know numbers, you always provided them immediately. You did a great job. And I want to thank you for your service to Calaveras County.
Welcome.
Thirty-six years. How did you do it?
Well, actually, there was one point when I was in the Assessor's Office and there was a budget crisis at the county level and they asked for options. I actually volunteered to take a reduced position. So I worked part-time because of, of course, then I had all these kids at home. So I worked part-time. So my total time is close to twenty-nine years, not quite thirty-six. But I did it because I care.
So that's a huge statement, Kathy.
Yeah.
You know, you know what? And it's dedication like that, that, you know, we, we get from our very own. So we appreciate that. And I think that you said, you know, it's been a pleasure mostly. So one, two, three, and four, your pleasure. And number five, the other side of almost, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, just, thank you so much. Thank you for, sorry, off there, Jeff.
Thank you for all your support and helping, not just myself, but the Board. Same thing what Gary said, every time I've reached out, you've always been very helpful in getting me on the street and now. And also thank you for being part of the strategic plan. That was a heavy haul and I know you were, you were big lift in getting county staff and employees on board and helping the Board get to the path we're on now. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy, for your dedication and I hope you enjoy retirement. Lots of fishing. Enjoy your family. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll open it to public comments. Public comments?
Hello. Hi, I'm Reid Durham, Assessor. As Kathy said, I work with her in the Assessor's Office. I came in ninety-four.
A full sign, part sign?
Eighty-nine, right?
Two thousand and seven. Kathy was our auditor appraiser. And one thing you may not know about Kathy is she's, well, you probably do know, she's successfully smart. And the Board of Equalization does these classes for continued education. You have to have twenty-four hours of continued education every single year. And Kathy had taken the Possess Re-Interest class, which is the advanced course. And for many years, she held the title of the highest score in the state. So very proud. I don't know how long you kept that, but you did. When Kathy says she is proud of her boys, she is. And she used to talk about them all the time in the office. And it was a real pleasure working for Kathy and I wish her the best in retirement.
Awesome.
Good morning, Board. My name is Greg Sessions. I've been in the Auditor's Office for nine years, worked with Kathy for that time, and I've been able to be her assistant for the last four years. What I remember when I started in the, in the Accountant Auditor's Office is Kathy's position, the way she went about it. I don't remember hearing a single time that she was aspiring to be in the position that she is now. I don't know that she wanted it, but at the, at the time when it became vacant, she was the best choice. She was the right person for that job. And it's been obvious the way that she has gone about her work, how much she cares about the county, how much she cares about the people. She would always tell us, you know, to look at everything, even within our own department, to, you know, cut costs wherever possible. Don't be wasteful. This is the public's money. We're just stewards of, of a public trust. And, and her approach has been just a great example. I'm thankful for the time that she spent with me. I'm thankful for her leadership in the department and I wish her the best in retirement. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Do we have any online?
We have no online public comment.
I'd like.
Oh, I'm sorry. Teresa.
So the County Administrative Office works very closely with Auditor Controller's Office. And I'd like to say that Kathy's leadership is much appreciated. The sign of a truly great leader is the development of their staff. And although Kathy's leaving, and I know that's going to be a huge hole to fill, I have the utmost confidence in the folks that she's leaving behind because I know that she's truly empowered her team and that they'll continue to do the excellent work. So Kathy, I appreciate your leadership. You're going to be missed. We truly have enjoyed working with you and I wish you the best in retirement.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll bring them back to the Board.
Sir, you know, empowerment of people is the true sign of leadership, you know. So with that, I'd like to make a motion.
Of a motion, of a second?
Second.
Of a second. All in favor?
I.
Close. Passes five, zero. Kathy. I, if we didn't get enough votes, I'm not sure you could retire. If it was two, three, then, you know, you'd have to go back.
That's, I thought that's what I was motioning.
Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors recognizes and commends Kathy Gomes for her many years of outstanding service to the people of the County of Calaveras, passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the Cal, County of Calaveras, State of California, this fourth day of November, two thousand and twenty-five. Come on out.
Ready? Thank you. Thanks.
No, we'll worry this week and that week. Good job. Can we take that over with her staff?
Okay.
Here. That way you want us to know? We go, hi, people sad, oh, we didn't intend that stuff. Oh, all part of this mess. No, what? Oh, I think hard to say, you guys can get it. Right, right. No, absolutely. Just makes sense.
Yeah. Ready? One, two. Her, maybe yours better.
That's it. Ask them. Will that, you know? Who's sending you down, okay?
Great, we'll move on to our second proclamation. Madam Clerk?
Item three, proclamation, Adult Services Adopt a Proclamation Recognizing November eleventh as Veterans Day in Calaveras County.
And I'll hang the, hand the gavel over to Supervisor Andal.
This is a proclamation recognizing November eleventh, twenty-twenty-five as Veterans Day. Whereas, the freedoms we enjoy as Americans have been preserved through the courage, dedication, and sacrifice of the members of the United States Armed Forces. And whereas, Veterans Day is a time for all citizens to pause and reflect upon the immeasurable contributions of the men and women who have served honorably in our nation's military. And whereas, the veterans of Calaveras County are part of this proud legacy, having answered the call of duty in times of conflict and peace. And whereas, it is fitting that we honor not only those who fought on distant battlefields, but also those who served on posts at home. Acknowledging that all have played an essential role in safeguarding our democracy. And whereas, the county of Calaveras recognizes the debt of gratitude we owe to our veterans. Whose sacrifices remind us daily of the true cost of freedom. Brian, do you have something to say?
Good morning, Chair, Board. I am Brian Galicia, Calaveras County Veteran Service Officer. We answered the call. Some of us volunteered, others were drafted. But all of us took an oath and we performed our duties with pride and honor. When we returned home, many of us struggled to find a new path. The military structure we had relied on for so many years was gone. And some of us found it hard to let go of that order, that purpose. For many, service in the armed forces gave us a mission greater than ourselves. A sense of belonging, of duty, or something higher. As we transitioned back to civilian life, we drew on our training to adapt. But no matter how much time passes, a part of us will always miss what we had while serving. The camaraderie, the discipline, the meaning. Many of us believe our oaths never expire. If called again, we would answer without hesitation. But even without that call, we continue to serve just in different ways. We find one another again, those who understand our language, our culture. Who know the meaning of duty and commitment. We join veterans organizations like the Veterans of Foreign Wars or the American Legion. We volunteer at our local churches, food pantries, and hospitals. We come together to honor the fallen and support the families left behind. We step up to our, help our communities in times of need. Because service doesn't end when the uniform comes off. It lives in how we carry ourselves, how we serve others, and how we continue to uphold the values we swore to defend. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Brian. Are there any other veterans or comments today? Bring it back to the board.
I'd just like to say, Brian, couldn't have been better said. Thank you very much for that.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to say, Brian, thank you. You do a fantastic job with the veterans in the county. Going back several years ago, we just had a part-time person in the HHS building. And you've expanded that and, and you've reached out to so many veterans here in Cal, Calaveras County and outside Calaveras County. So I want to thank you for that. I want to thank all the vets for their service to our country. Thank you.
Yeah, all, all, you know, as Gary said, all, all our service members for providing the opportunity to do what we're doing today. You know, without, without you, this opportunity wouldn't be the same. So thank you.
And just echo what all my fellow board members have said and thank all the vets that have put their lives, and not just the vets, but also their families for their sacrifice.
With that, do I have a motion?
I will move this aside.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors recognizes Tuesday, November eleventh, twenty-twenty-five as Veterans Day throughout the county. And encourages all residents to honor and thank our veterans for their service, valor, and dedication to our nation. Thank you.
You told me I wasn't.
Now our last proclamation, Madam Clerk?
Item four, proclamation, Clerk of the Board of Supervisors Adopt a Proclamation Declaring November twenty-twenty-five as Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month in Calaveras County.
I'll pass the gavel over to Supervisor Stopper.
Thank you, Mr. Hubbard. Whereas Sikhs have been a part of Calaveras County community for over two decades. And have contributed to the fabric of American society for more than one hundred and twenty years. And whereas during the early twentieth century, thousands of Sikh Americans contributed to the nation's growth by grow, working in agriculture, lumber mills, mines, and on the Western Pacific Railroad. And whereas Sikhism, the world's fifth largest religion, is practiced by more than twenty-five million people globally, including an estimated five hundred thousand Sikh Americans. I'll have to double check that number because I think that's substantially gone up. Whereas Sikh Americans pursue diverse professions and have made significant contributions to the cultural, social, and economic vitality of the United States, including distinguished service in the United States Armed Forces and notable achievements in agriculture, information technology, small business, the oil and trucking industry, medicine, public service, and much, much more. And whereas, the Sikh community upholds values of equality, service, and respect for all people embodying principles that strengthen the social fabric of Calaveras County and the nation. And whereas, Calaveras County affirms its commitment to promoting religious literacy, mutual understanding, and respect of diversity, consistent with the principles of the First Amendment. And whereas, the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors seeks to honor and recognize the many contributions of Sikh Americans and to foster a community that values inclusion, education, and shared heritage. Me as one, I was quite some time before I became supervisor. But I read up on the history of Sikhism and the Sikhs and something very, you know. You know, historically, it's a very strong religion. And it, it starts from bringing them together and working together, you know, survival and everything. So I would, I would suggest that, you know, if you, if you're not familiar with the Sikh religion and, and everything that went, went on, to research that because it's it's very fascinating. With that. Basij, would you like to say something? Anybody else after him?
Morning Chair, my respected board members. I just want to thank everyone for this proclamation and the continued support of the Sikh community in Calaveras County. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
We have no online public comment.
Thank you, Stacy. Board members, anything to say?
I'll say, in addition to all these contributions, when I met Basij in particular, you coached a seventh grade boys' basketball team. So, thank you. No small task.
Your dedication to the county and the work that you've done through multiple channels is appreciated.
Yeah, I so appreciate you and your brother and all the work that you guys have done with us and for us. So thank you.
The fa, the family, yeah.
Thank you for your service and, and everything you and your brother have done. So, thank you.
And, and, thank you.
A motion?
I'll move.
A motion by Ms. Follendorf? I'll second. The second by Mr. Toffenelli. All those in favor?
Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors hereby designates the month of November twenty-twenty-five as Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month in Calaveras County. And encourages all residents to learn more about the rich history, traditions, and contributions of the Sikh American community. Thank you, sir, and everyone else.
Madam Clerk, we'll move on to general public comment.
Any item of interest in the public, to the public that is within the subject matter or restriction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the thirty-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Thank you. Do you have public comment? Morning.
Hi, my name is Jenna Salazar and I'm representing Libertas Academy in Angels Camp. I serve on the Board of Directors, but I wanted to let the board know that we launched Leadership Libertas this year. This program is for juniors and seniors and it is patterned after like the leadership programs that are throughout the community, like Leadership Calaveras. And so our students are going to be connecting with leaders in various community sectors throughout the region. And to learn from our leaders and understand what are the strengths and challenges that our region is currently facing. So on behalf of Leadership Libertas and Libertas Academy, thank you guys so much for the work that you do. I know it's a lot of hours and often thankless. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Butler?
My name is Christopher Butler, publisher of calaveras2026election.com. During general public comments on October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five, I presented a fact-checked, evidence-backed statement at the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting concerning the controversial Caltrans state route for a concrete median in Murphys. At State Senator Marie Alvarado Gill's Town Hall, hours later in Murphys, I delivered a similar statement from the Board of Supervisors meeting describing a sequence of connected facts confirmed by corresponding public records specific to the Murphys Concrete Median. Senator Alvarado Gill addressed the ongoing concrete median controversy during her town hall, appearing to have bought into the county's ruse, claiming it was caught unaware by the Caltrans project portraying Caltrans as villain and county as victim. Supervisors, when will there be transparency and accountability for the county's internal breakdown of communication and processes? When may we expect honest disclosure from county officials regarding who knew what and when about the concrete median project? And who ignored the documented notifications? This controversy is a county government self-inflicted injury. Who among you will break from the pack and make a public commitment to understand and learn from the root causes of this communication and process breakdown? There were two years of missed opportunities for the county government to object. Calaveras County is gaslighting Senator Alvarado Gill and her staff, gaslighting and outright lying to the public and deceptively deflecting and shifting blame to Caltrans for what is the county's own lack of diligence or adherence to auditable internal processes that are now causing the state's expenditure of additional time, resources, and taxpayer funds. In October twenty-twenty-four, in twenty-twenty-four, the District One, Three, Four, and Five supervisors and former District Two supervisor were all notified of the Caltrans median project by email. First in June by County Council and again in September by the interim Public Works Director. Supervisors Hubbard, Stopper, Toffenelli, and Follendorf, do not intentionally deceive and insult your constituents by denying that fact. Supervisor Hubbard, on September eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, a post appeared on your official District Three Supervisor Facebook page expressing your outrage at the sudden appearance of the hazardous concrete median. Is it reasonable to suggest that the demands and distractions of you holding two full-time taxpayer compensated jobs may be at least partially responsible for your demonstrated lack of attention to detail concerning District Three's core assets? Is it respectful for the county government to continue deflecting blame to Caltrans rather than standing up and owning responsibility for its undeniable neglect of oversight? My name is Christopher Butler, publisher of calaveras2026election.com.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Hi.
Morning.
Good morning, ladies, fellows. My name is Danielle Maxwell. I reside in District Three. I'm here on behalf of my son, Jeremy Benoit, and hundreds of others. First off, thank you and congratulations to everybody. Wanted to start out with my concerns. Here as a resident of a mother with special needs child. I haven't been able to work in the past four years. Right now, the county is in a lot of non-compliance to the Ladderman's Act. There's rights that my son has according to the Code forty-five oh-two for persons with developmental disabilities has the same rights and legal responsibilities guaranteed to all individuals in the United States Constitution laws. B, is the intent for legislature and persons with developmental disabilities have the rights, including but not limiting to the right treatment and rehabilitation services. And I'm going to keep this short, a right for dignity, privacy, and humane care to maximize the extent of possibly treatment services supports, they'll be in the natural community settings. Three, the right to participate in appropriate program, publicly supported education regardless of degree of disability. Four, the right to prompt medical care and treatment. Five, the right to religious freedom and practice. Six, the right to social interactions and participation in community activities. Seven, the right to physical exercise and recreational opportunities. Eight, the right to free, to be free from harm, including unnecessary physical restraint or isolation, excessive medication, abuse, or neglect. Nine, the right to be free from hazardous procedures. And ten, the right to make choices in their own lives, including but not limiting to where and with whom they live, their relationships, and with the people in their community. And the right to a prompt investigation of any alleged abuse against them. I could go on right now with the Ladderman's Act. Number two, the government, there's the tort claim for a five oh-four plan typically. They develop a personal injury. They develop a personal injury claim filed against the government entity in harm, resulting in the failure to provide reasonable accommodations. I've reached out to Tom, Mary, Marie, and Dave. There's an open casework on this, and we need help.
You and I worked together before. Remember, so. Glad to be back. Didn't get person's number, and it took well week to find him.
Sounds good. Mass in this community. Gary, there's supposed to be an adult program opening up in Valley Springs. Need state funding. We've been waiting since August. There's a lot of individuals in this community that need this program opened. Please look into that. It's in your district. It's been years. It's been two years that my son's been able to get education and be in this community. And we'll talk.
Thank you, Danielle.
Time and support.
Thank you. Morning, Todd.
Always nice to be given an introduction, excuse me. I had some comments to deliver, but I think I'm gonna go a little off script. I've been in Melba County, was born and raised there. I've worked with many county supervisors through my involvement there and now in this position on behalf of Senator Gill, and worked with supervisors all over District Four. We did have a town hall here on October fourteenth. That town hall was to focus on the wine industry and the struggles that they have within that industry, and it morphed into the median issue going through Murphys. I've heard a lot of public comments in my twenty years in public service, but I and I'll speak for myself and not for the senator. I totally disagree with the speaker that spoke about our town hall before. I don't think that the Calaveras Board of Supervisors has provided any dishonesty in the process. Your staff has been wonderful, and this community was pretty much led dark by Caltrans. That's been very evident in our Zoom calls that we've had with Caltrans, and what was previously stated does not represent what's been taking place. So, with that said, I apologize. I'm usually just a chipper human being. That's just over the top with energy, but I just thought I'd set the record straight. The senator did express interest or her position was very clear during the town hall on October fourteenth that she wants to see that median removed and restored to its prior configuration. She emphasized that she doesn't make promises that she can't keep, but she has been working directly with the District Ten Director Grace Beckseau, which you were on the call Supervisor Hubbard a little while back. Emergency Services Director Eric Holt was very clear in his opinion that 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 median causes an evacuation impediment to this community. So, with that said, I've never really given public comments like this before, but I thought due to what was previously stated that I'd set the record straight, and I wish you all a happy election day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Good morning, Aisha.
Good morning. Chairman Supervisors, Aisha Williamson from Sierra Hope. I do see that there is a consent agenda item for us later, so if you'd like me to reserve some of my sort of state of the community, I can save that a little bit, but what I did want to come up here today and just share with you, and I think we all know, and and, is that the Nunez? All tongue-tied today. Marcos, let's just go with that. Quite a few stats about what's going on with SNAP and the pause in the benefits and how that's affecting everybody. We have a community food pantry located in Angels Camp. We serve everybody in Calaveras County. We don't check where you live, so truthfully, anybody can come anywhere to get that assistance, and right now, everybody needs it. So, we have put some food donation barrels out. We are seeing, literally, last week was not a food pantry week, and we turned away, I guarantee you, no less than fifty people. We not only serve people through the community food pantry, but we also have a nutrition assistance program, which is grocery gift cards to those in our HIV and AIDS program. So, pretty much, we serve about a hundred people a month through that program, and then every time we do a food pantry, it's averaging, prior to this crisis, about fifty-six households. And as I previously shared in a presentation in September, that's like ranging in one to eleven family members. Most are over the age of fifty-five. We're seeing a lot that are medically fragile, disabled. It's a crisis. So, like I said, we put out food barrels at a couple of groceries, we have Sierra Hills Market. Angels Food Market has been willing to participate. We're asking area businesses if they would match and do the same. Like I said, I know there's a consent agenda item here. We're just asking for the community's support and anyone that can help, any schools that might want to participate in a food drive, as well as making area schools, organizations, and clubs aware that if you know of someone in the community that could use the assistance, please let us know. Based on the feedback that we're getting, we right now are operating the first and third Wednesday through November and December, which is a shift for us. Normally, we did the second and the fourth, but because of the holidays and the way they fell, we were adjusting to that. But if the community steps up and the need is there, we will move to weekly. The area food bank only serves families once a month, so that fill in the gap opportunity, and we know that the SNAP benefits might be paying out when they do at half. There's still gonna be a need. So, we hope to be there, and like I said, if we have to move to weekly, we're gonna try and figure that out for everybody.
Can I ask you two quick questions?
Yes.
Could you remind everybody where you're located?
We moved, so we have our new space, and it's in Angels Camp on Main Street. It's four seven three South Main Street. It's in the Alta Village sort of business complex, right two doors down from Bret Hart and across from the Best Western, almost immediately across from Little Shoes, and it's kind of at the back next to our office, but it is a separate location from our office.
Do you take monetary donations?
Absolutely, and we have a QR code and a poster that we're sharing with everybody because it's not always about what gets donated, and sometimes, like I said, we actually do medically tailored food boxes too for medically fragile folks, and we also have volunteers that make deliveries to them, and sometimes we have to purchase that food when it's not available to us.
Thank you. Thank you, Aisha. Do we have any other public comment? We'll move on now to consent agenda.
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request the removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Thank you. Do any members of the board wish to pull any items?
I wish to pull item number twelve.
Twelve?
I would like number six, please.
Number six? Any others? Would any member of the public like to pull any of the consent agenda items? They're seeing none. We'll move back to the board and ask for a motion for the rest of the items.
So moved.
Oh, I turned it off.
So moved. Do a second. All in favor? Passes five zero. Madam Clerk, would you mind reading item number six?
Item six, action item administrative office, one, make public benefit findings, and two, approve community organization district allocations from District Three and Four in the amount of two thousand dollars to the Bret Hart High School Food Pantry and two thousand dollars to the Sierra Hope Food Pantry.
I pulled this. First, I'd like to thank Supervisor Hubbard for matching the contribution to both of these organizations. I called, contacted Sierra Hope last week, asking what the influx was gonna be, knowing that the SNAP was gonna expire, and I was shocked at the volume of increase that had shut up her door. I know that this amount isn't a lot, but I think it's a way of commitment that we recognize that there is an issue in this community without that support, and there are a lot of families that depend on this. And Sierra Hope did nestle right between all of the schools, so it's a great location for accessibility for community members. I don't know if a lot of people know that, but how some of the teachers have set up a a grocery store on campus for a student to access food. Because we do know that there are those individuals that need, that don't have the best home and are need that support. And so it's really an amazing support that the school, the teachers have come together to give those students as another line of support to get food, food in the house. So, thank you, and I just wanted to call out Sierra Hope for being here today, and appreciate the future partnerships that we can do together.
Thank you Supervisor Follendorf, and thank you for the lead on this, and it is a drop in the bucket, but a lot of drops will, a lot of drops will fill that bucket, so we just gotta keep going. Is there any other comment? Is there any public comment regarding this item?
I think, you know, Margot and Marcos have the more data on this, but I don't think everybody necessarily realizes the number of people that actually receive SNAP benefits, and I'll tell me, it's very high. And this cut has brought many of our clients to me saying, I had to make a choice, either I eat or I don't pay my rent, or my power's turned off, or whatever it is. I had a pregnant mother call me in a panic on my cellphone on Saturday that she's all alone, her PG&E was shut off, and she made the decision, and now she regrets it. She's pregnant, and she wanted to eat. And she has two other kids at home, and so now she has no power, and she was begging me to get her PG&E turned back on. It's taking a little bit with PG&E. She was quite behind in her bill. So, we don't just serve the community with the food pantry, we're also looking at that balance and the choices that are people are being forced to make right now. And as the type of organization that we are, we do have the ability to provide utility assistance. I believe we're the only ones able to do it in the county right now from what I've heard, whether that's PG&E, water, et cetera. We're able to do that, but we also help with rent. We help with food. We help with a lot of things, and that's the problem for folks right now, is they're having to make that decision. So, we're getting both asks coming to us for that assistance. Can you help me not only keep the roof over my head, which is what we often do? Can you help me pay that utility bill? But by the way, I also can't eat. And that's the sacrifice that Calaveras citizens are really looking at right now. I believe it's a little over Marco said, it's a little over sixty-three hundred people receive SNAP benefits. It's a very large amount considering the size of our county, which I believe is a little over forty thousand. It's a pretty big ratio. I'm very grateful, Supervisor Follendorf. I'd like to just shine a quick spotlight because personally, I had a child who recently graduated from Bret Hart, so I know about one campus grocery, and it was started by teachers. They also have a clothing closet there. They've worked very hard to provide that opportunity for students to drop in and grab something either for themselves during the day if they don't have lunch or to take something home when maybe they know that the cupboards are bare. We are doing the same thing, and that's why I said earlier, we're reaching out to the schools to say, if you know of students or families that are struggling, we'll find a way. We can do it with compassion. You know, we can do it with pride. It's a difficult time for everybody, but when we ask, and thank you so much, it is significant, each of your gifts from each of your districts. It really does make a difference. I have an individual donor who put out a challenge grant for five thousand, and they said if I could get that matched, they would match it again. So, I'm hoping to get that fifteen thousand with your help in that way. So, I just wanted to make you aware, it's a little bit more than just the food. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
I think.
Oh, sorry. Um, yeah, barring any other further public comment, but I just, you know, typically, I as being a privileged elected official that's nonpartisan, I don't comment on politics up top, but my disappointment in both sides because they're tooling the people that are most in need for a political agenda, whether right or wrong on either side. And a lot of the other assistant help, such as rent, utility bills and stuff that these people are making hard choices on, also come from the very top. So, I just have to say, you know, if I think, I think I'm inspired to help, you know, so I would love to get your card, and I'm sure Martin can provide it to me. He's very astute. And with with that, I'll stop there and I'll let Ms. Follendorf.
Are there any other public comment?
I was gonna say, is there anything online?
We have no online public comment.
Thank you.
And I'll move that item.
Do I have a second?
Well, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll move on now to item number twelve.
Item twelve, agreement, Public Works. One, approve an exception to the provisions of the existing joint powers agreement between the Calaveras Council of Governments and Calaveras County to allow the COG to be the lead agency for the PSNE phase associated with improvements on SR forty-nine, Southern Gateway Corridor, and two, commit to future acceptance of Airport Road into the county maintained road system.
Thank you. Mr. Barton?
Good morning, Sheriff, everybody in the board. I come on your Public Works Director. I have with me here Melissa Rajio. She is the Executive Director of the Calaveras Council of Governments. The item we bring before you today is the state route forty-nine Southern Gateway Corridor Plan. This plan was developed by the COG as a regional transportation planning agency. And this segment of the plan identifies improvements from Mountain Ranch Road to Airport Road. Public Works is recommending the COG act as the lead agency as the COG has access to regional funding and resources to better facilitate the delivery of the design components of this project. As the board is aware, the COG will be submitting the regional transportation improvement plan to Caltrans on December fifteenth, identifying one point four million dollars in regional funding for this phase. In order to clear the path for the COG to initiate the design, Public Works is requesting a deception to the JPA to allow COG to be the lead agency. As part of these improvements, the development of Airport Road is identified as a major component.
Good morning. As most of the board is aware, the Calaveras Transit Agency is currently in the process of building a new transit facility. This transit facility will be off of Airport Road, just outside of San Andreas. Airport Road currently is a privately maintained road, and the CTA needs to obtain legal access to build a new facility. So, we need that access off of Airport Road. CTA staff has been working with the current two property owners to get the necessary right of way, and we are currently in negotiations with these two property owners to dedicate their property that's needed for access and to construct a new planned road. That is why CTA is here requesting the county accept these dedications from these two property owners and dedicate this property back to the public. And so, CTA is here to request the county accept this so we can proceed with our project.
Thank you. Supervisor Toffenelli? Do you have your remarks?
No, I, this is, this is something that is a very good thing for the county. Right now, CTA rents or leases a property, and the history of CTA since COG took it over, it's just grown, and it's just a great thing that's going on right now, especially with transportation with the situation with with the school buses and then providing the service to the children to get to their schools in the county. This is just a great project, and I support all of it, and whatever we need to do to get it built, because the COG building will be built next to it, and we'll be, that lease should be ending soon too. So, we will have a permanent place for CTA and the COG. So we will have a permanent place for CTA and the COG. So I support this completely.
Supervisor. Um, Sauer.
I just want to say that uh, I, a hundred percent, Mr. Toffenelli is correct. Um, and the circulation area, it's a benefit to the community as a whole, I believe. Um, and it's another step forward to uh. Shining our community center. Of Calaveras County, uh, San Andreas with the government center and everything being here. Um, and also. I think there should be some consideration. Let's see how this, this moves forward and maybe some uh, consideration on working with. Angels Camp, City Council and maybe uh, thinking in the future. If Public Works Director agrees with it, on possibly uh, changing the rules and moving forward so that we can. Continue to be cooperative across the county and collaborate.
This has been a long time coming, so I'd like to recognize the CTA staff um, on their hard work to getting this. Um, this wasn't something that happened overnight. I think this is something that um, has been in almost over a decade. Um, I think it shows, shows the true commitment and partnership of, um, you know, where you have an idea. And finally bringing it to fruition. Um, I think it's a great opportunity for this community um, to open up. And um, have more investments into the San Andreas area with allowing this acceptance of Airport Way. And I also agree with Supervisor Stopper. Um, I think um. We have spent the last decade in how things work. Um, we have seen what hadn't worked and I would all support um, staff working with the other jurisdiction. And seeing what that looks like and um, updating the JPA. So we can all maximize um, the benefits of not just the COG but the CTA.
Thank you. I think one of the avenues to do that is through the executive management group and we can start there.
Supervisor Anvil.
Thank you for all your work on this. I think it's a wonderful contribution to the community and the collaborations are wonderful. Thank you.
I just want to say it's exciting. It's exciting to see you both working together so well. It's, it's such a synergy and uh, the meeting that we did the other day with Supervisor Andal, you could see it, it's electric and um. Go forth and conquer. Thank you. Win.
I, I was trying to.
My watch is annoying.
The watches.
Oh, it's the, it's the, yeah. I actually, it would be like one of those cat videos. We should have had you on, on camera going like following the light.
We, we are on video.
There you go. There you go. Uh, do we have any other questions? Is there any public comment regarding this item?
We have no online public comment.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the board.
I'll move this item.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Passes five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is everybody alright? If we continue on to regular gender, would you like a five minute break? We'll take a five minute break. Thank you.
Change of watch.
Okay, thank you.
Close, we close.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we'll move on to the regular agenda. Item number fourteen.
Item fourteen, action item clerk of the Board of Supervisors, select one member of the Board of Supervisors to act as the 2025-2026 CSAC representative and one member as the alternate for the CSAC Association year beginning December one, two thousand and twenty five. So this is our annual election of one board representative and one alternative to represent CSAC. We do have the CSAC Conference the first week in December, so we need to make the nomination today to allow any votes to be done at that meeting.
That'll bring it to the board.
I would just like to say, I haven't, you know, been privileged to serve a CSAC representative. I'm still interested, but at the same time, Martin, you, you, you speak eloquently, you network phenomenally. So if you're interested, I would like to work with you. I mean, but with that.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
And I'm willing to back, I'm willing to back as the alternate to allow the two of you to work together if that's an option. Cause you've been making most of the meetings this past year and I foresee the next year to just be, this is complicated with my control.
Supervisor Hufnelli?
I'm okay with that.
Supervisor Andal, I, I, I probably should say something. I'm, I'm unfortunately not going to make the CSAC Conference this year. Yeah.
Well, there he goes, everything I said.
Wait a minute.
Amanda, are you gonna be there?
I had blocked it out on my calendar just in case, but willing to give it up just, but I wasn't gonna go the whole week. I was gonna go the days like the board meetings and all that.
Very good.
But I'm willing to open it up to another board member as well.
Okay, I just unfortunately I am going in for surgery and the only time I'm available, available to go in is on the eighteenth, which I've got to talk to you about Ben as well, and it sort of precludes me from going to CSAC. So I don't know how that would work.
Well, we, we could discuss that later. Um, I mean, for the time being, you know, make the decision that you are as a board. I, I'm, if, if everyone, I would be happy to continue as lead. Um, but, you know, Amanda, I mean, you can fill in for him as a second alternat-, as the alternative.
Well, I was gonna open next option to do Martin and Supervisor Andal and give Supervisor Andal the opportunity to be on one of the, um, uh, be part of that. I mean, I'm already busy with the RCRC. Um, so I think it would be in our board best interest to allow someone else. Um, she's been here for a year now. Um, I think it would be a good compromise, a, a good, not compromise. It'll be compatible with the two of you to have her as a backup to the backup. I mean, we did it last year when I was out on maternity leave. We did the, we did that. I don't see that it being any different. Um, so I, I don't know. I know CSAC's not thrilled about it, but I think we have another excuse with Martin going out on doctor.
And they do have a spot where it says alternatives. So you can have an alternative to your alternative.
But that is if Supervisor Andal is interested. I'm acting as if she is interested. I haven't even had an expectation with her.
As with all things that I'm involved with, a Plan D is.
Thank you Supervisor Pollandor. I am interested. I, um, I have enjoyed my time with CSAC and the new Supervisor Institute and the continued things they offer. I would be happy to be in, alternate to an alternate. Call my S, however that works.
I don't know, but I'm the odd man out, so that's fine with me. I just said that's fine with me. That's good. I'll stick with Lapco.
So I, yeah, if I, if I'm, yeah.
I would move that you remain as the CSAC lead. And I would like to share the alternate position, if that's possible, with Supervisor Andal.
With everyone?
But, um, the clerk is correct. The form, um, to return to CSAC has, you know, a director and then you can put one or more alternates. So I think that would be fine.
Great, thank you.
I'll second, I'll second.
All in favor? Thank you. Passes five zero.
Thank you.
We'll move on now to item number fifteen.
Item fifteen, informational item, adult services, receive a semi-annual report from the County Veteran Services Office.
Good morning again. Uh, once again, I am Brian Galicia Calaveras, County Veteran Service Officer, uh, providing a semi-end report on the status of the office and, um, what we've done. Just note this, uh, report provides information taken from local records, uh, at this point. Um, and this was gonna span information from fiscal years twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, our office is comprised of myself as the VSO, one veteran service representative, and he and I are the only ones who can do claims. I have an extra higher clerical assistants who just started and an extra higher program coordinator. Our Veterans Outreach Coordinator position is currently vacant. Um, the veterans, the program coordinator position, um, is the one who is in charge of our support groups. We currently have, uh, two that happen, uh, twice a month, each in Valley Springs and in Murphy's. Um, we are looking at, and with the, um, assistance with Aisha from Sierra Hope, looking at maybe doing one in Angels Camp as well, maybe two in Angels Camp. Um, we are working toward that at the moment. Since I last spoke to you, we have implemented veteran satellite offices. Uh, once a month, the second Wednesday of the month, we are in West Point, um, from nine AM to, uh, three PM. And in the third Wednesday, we are in Arnold at the, uh, HHSA Outstation Office that is located inside the, um, medical clinic. Um, and we are also open nine AM to three PM. We are looking to have additional, um, locations available um, in Railroad Flat, Angels Camp, and Copperopolis. We are trying to nail down some, some spots in Copper. That's the, the only place we really don't have a place yet. Um, but, uh, Railroad Flat, we're, we're talking, and then in Angels Camp, uh, once again, Aisha was Sierra Hope has offered us a, a location as well. Uh, contacts. So as you can see, uh, fiscal year twenty-two thousand and twenty-four compared to twenty-two thousand and twenty-five, um, mostly is positive, uh, increase. Uh, the emails dropped by seventy-five percent. Uh, more people are contacting us by phone and coming into the office. Um, we are still seeing over a thousand people a year, um, in person. Claims, uh, we submitted, we've, we've had a decline in claims and most of that is gonna be due to the fact that our, um, seasoned veteran service representative uh, accepted a position as veteran service officer in Amador County. And, um, our new veteran service representative has only been accredited since, uh, August, which precludes him until he has that, he cannot submit claims. So it was this training process to go through with VA and, uh, uh, Calvet to get him accredited. And, uh, he is now moving forward and working claims on his own, and I am monitoring his, his progress on that. The Medi-Cal cost avoidance, uh, a lot of that is done by our clerical staff. Um, the extra hire, we just hired, this is his third week, and we will be training him on that, so we expect those numbers to increase. However, I do wanna give props to, uh, HHSA. They have been giving us the documentation we need to process those Medi-Cal cost avoidance, um, claims. They gave them more to us. We got the largest payment from Medi-Cal, from DHCS for that program we have ever received for six months. Claims again, uh, we had, once again, a decrease in appeals and compensation, uh, type claims. Uh, we had an increase in burial benefits and surviving, uh, family claims. Um, as far as the approvals go for, and this is both fiscal years combined, um, we have a, uh, in appeals claims, a fifty, little over fifty percent approval rate for compensation claims, that's the disability, the pension claims, which is our low income program, and any dependents' claims. Um, that, we're getting almost seventy-five percent approval on these claims that we're putting in. Um, burial benefits, uh, we got eighty-three percent, and then surviving family claims for those eligible, uh, almost sixty percent. Benefits awarded, so, once again, we're showing a bit of a decrease due to the lower numbers of claims. However, we are still producing a decent amount of, uh, federal dollars coming into the county to our veterans who are spending it here, um, than we ever had before. So it's, it's still a decent amount of money that we are receiving. Um, on average, I think, if I remember correctly, uh, we're still bringing in with the ongoing claims. This is just new benefits. Um, over eight million dollars a month, or a year, I'm sorry, eight, eight million dollars a year in, uh, federal dollars coming into our veterans. College Fee Waiver Program has stayed, stayed level. It pretty much kinda stays around that, depending on, you know, new children going into college and those graduating out, so it kind of balances out. Um, but that is a great program, uh, to help, uh, the, uh, children of veterans, of disabled veterans, uh, go to college in California. So we are expecting some challenges with the staffing, um, but we're dedicated and still passionate about helping our veterans and making sure that we get them taken care of as the best we can. So. Um, we are, once again, located at the General and Veterans Memorial District Building and are, we're open five days a week, eight-thirty to four. And walk-ins are nine AM to one PM and two to four PM every Thursday, no appointment necessary. And that's it.
Thank you, Brian. Do we have any questions?
I do. Um, we talked earlier about SNAP. And you just mentioned, uh, the amount of federal dollars that come through, um, to the VA. Um, are you seeing delay or hangup in that realm of your world, um, for veterans' benefits?
Um, so we have been notified by VA that the benefit side of the VA and, um, the money will continue. There is no, no delay in those benefits at all, and I can personally attest that disability benefits did get paid, uh, this month. Um, and there's no talk at all that we've heard about benefits being delayed for December.
Do you know, uh, what clients you have served, how many have been dependent on SNAP program? And, or families, um, that are impacted?
Uh, we can, I can probably will report on that because some of the forms that we receive from HHSA are for people who have applied for CalFresh, uh, our, our SNAP program. Um, we do get very few, um, and most of that is due to, uh, any veteran who's getting disability at a higher rate. Um, that amount of money is gonna make them ineligible to receive those benefits. We have more veterans who apply for Medi-Cal than we do any of the other program, uh, public assistance programs.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Is there any public comment regarding this item? Is there any comment online?
We have no online public comment.
I'll bring it back to the board Supervisor Andal.
I just wanted to say thank you for your efforts to get out in the community. It was great to see you at Lumberjack Day, specifically with Amador VAs, you know, cause specifically in West Point, the residents tend to do a lot in Amador and Calaveras, so thank you for your outreach.
No problem. Supervisor Stopper?
Uh, as, you know, gratitude from my constituents, uh, down, down in Rancho, I mean, along with Garry's. I'm not speaking for yours, you can speak for your own. But, uh, that, that said, uh, you know, I have a very high number of veterans in my district, as we all do in Calaveras County, and it's much appreciated the work you do, do, do for them, and I already said it earlier, you know? Cause these are the people we need to take care of that took care of us.
Can I add one thing?
Yes, please.
So, um, one of the other things that we do, um, for veterans who pass and the next that can come to us, one of the things a Vet VA does provide is, if they choose, is a headstone or marker. And we did have, I had the great-great-grandson of a veteran reach out to me. Um, and his grandfather is buried in McCullumie Hill. And, but his headstone was, had been destroyed and they couldn't, they didn't know where his remains were. And so I, him and I worked together, and we got a new headstone, um, ordered from VA, and they provided it. And the cemetery blocked off a certain number of slots for the veterans whose remains are known to be buried there. But the actual location, because of destroyed markers, um, is unknown. They have set aside, I think it's six, and it's right next to the flagpole. And back in May, uh, we had an unveiling of that particular veteran's, um, headstone. Uh, he was a Civil War veteran um, who, after his service, moved to McCullumie Hill. And his son, grandson, and great-grandson all became doctors in McCullumie Hill. And his great-grandson, I believe it is, um, was instrumental in helping to set up the VA Medical Facility in Sacramento and is, has a link to, uh, the medical library down at UC Davis. And a lot of the items that, um, the family member has will be on display down there at that library, including the diary that he carried on the battlefield that saved his life. He got hit by a mini-ball and it was present at that ceremony. Yeah, so I actually got to hold it. It was, it was an amazing thing, so. He took a mini-ball in the chest. It knocked him out, is what I'm told, and he got up, realized what happened, ran back to the line, and then got shot in the arm, so. But, yeah.
That's, uh, yeah, I'd like to talk to you about that, uh, but offline. Thank you very much, Brian. Uh, you gave me a tour when I first came onto the board, and you gave me a stress ball, and I still use it today a lot. Thank you very much. Is there any other comment? This is an informational item. Thank you very much, Brian.
Thank you.
We'll move on now to item number sixteen.
Item sixteen, resolution, planning. One, find exempt, find project exempt from SEQA. Two, conduct a public hearing. And three, adopt a resolution establishing Williamson Act Contract Number Three-Nine-Four for a total of two hundred fifty-two point four-two acres for Edward William Bardley and Jennifer Lauren and Ken Bardley, trustees of the Bardley Family Trust.
Sorry, Supervisor Stopper?
No.
You're right. Okay, uh, I wanna make sure I'm doing this right. I'm opening a public, a public hearing, and we're gonna run items sixteen and seventeen together, and then I'll close the public hearing after item seventeen. Is that correct?
Uh, that's, that's fine. Um, do you have the same presentation for both items or were they?
I broke them down. Um, we can run the second two that way if you want. Um, I put them out.
I was hoping that we could do that and then do it again for eighteen and nineteen as well. That's.
We can do that for eighteen and nineteen.
Okay.
I'll run through them very quickly. I actually broke them out.
Separately?
Separately in the first, for the first, um, the first contract.
So let's just take six.
And then I shut it up and combined them for the second.
Got it. So we'll just take sixteen for right now. Okay, so we're opening up a public hearing now. Thank you.
So very quickly, as you know, I can talk fast. Um, as you all know, the history of the Williamson Act goes way back to nineteen sixty-five, uh, when the state of California enacted the Cal-, uh, California Land Conservation Act, uh, to preserve agriculture lands and open space, um, by preserving their unnecessary conversion to urban uses. Uh, the Act enabled the local governments to, um, enter into contracts with private landowners for the purpose of, um, restricting specific parcels of land for agriculture and related open space uses. In doing so, the land is assessed as agriculture being the highest and best use of the land, resulting in lower taxes for the landowners. On July twenty-first, we received California Land Conservation Application from Edward and Jennifer Bardley, proposing to enter two hundred and fifty-two point four-two acres of land into an agriculture preserve and establish Williamson Act Contract Three-Ninety-Four. The subject parcel is one legal parcel comprised of two assessor parcels located off of Hunt Road approximately three point seven miles west of the Hunt Road and Highway Four intersection near Copperopolis. The California Land Conservation Application actually serves as both an application to establish a Williamson Act contract and agriculture preserve as well as a zoning amendment. So this is, uh, part one of the, um, application, and it is to, uh, find that the application for a Williamson Act contract and agriculture preserve meets the criteria for establishment. General Plan Policies encourage the continuation of participation in the Williamson Act as well as other agriculture-related long-term conservation programs. Um, the general plan land use designation for this parcel is resource production, which identifies those lands capable of and primarily used for agriculture. Located in the Salt Springs Valley, this area of the county is known to support a diversity of agriculture operations, including livestock grazing, uh, grapes, and even small orchards. Thousands of acres in this area of the county are in agriculture production and are currently, um, in a Williamson Act contract as well as an agriculture preserve. Calaveras County establishes rules to administer agriculture preserves and Williamson Act contracts in the county. Uh, Board of Supervisors Resolution Seventy-Five Four Eighty-Nine sets forth policies and rules which we still use today. Specific policies and rules applicable to establishment um, are further outlined in my staff reports, the Planning Commission, which was, um, included in your board packet. In summary, to qualify for a Williamson Act contract, the land must be capable of producing a minimum of two thousand dollars annually from commercial agriculture production. This application reports that a gross annual income from their cattle operation was ninety-four thousand five hundred dollars uh, annually in support, um, the feasibility study conducted by Scott Onetto, our Calaveras County Farm Advisor, indicates that the land is capable of producing two hundred and nine point seven five, um, dollars per acre annually. Uh, the agriculture preserve must consist of not less than one hundred acres for which, uh, for which you may include two or more contiguous parcels totaling one hundred acres. Minimum parcel size requirements in the zoning and in the general plan are both forty acres. The subject area is one legal parcel totaling two hundred and fifty-two point four-two acres, consisting of two assessor parcel numbers therefore meeting the minimum standard. Uh, pursuant to Article Four, Rule Two of Resolution Seventy-Five Four Eighty-Nine, the Ag Advisory Committee shall review an application and submit to the Board a recommendation. On September fourth, the Board of Supervisors-appointed Ag Advisory Committee reviewed this application and determined that it meets the minimum criteria necessary to qualify for a Williamson Act contract and recommends the Board of Supervisors establish the Agriculture Preserve and Williamson Act Contract. In conclusion, General Plan Policies, uh, promote the continuation of, uh, the use of California Land Conservation Contracts. The application is consistent with the general plan and applicable provisions of Title Seventeen. Proposed operation meets the minimum requirement set forth in Resolution Seventy-Five Four Eighty-Nine necessary to establish an agriculture preserve and Williamson Act contract. This operation is consistent with the surrounding zoning and land uses, uh, primarily as agriculture use and the land in the air, in the land in this area of the county is, um, is primarily used, um, agriculturally and is currently in agriculture production, agriculture preserve, and active Williamson Act contracts. Uh, this application is supported by your Ag Advisory Committee, and this project is categorically exempt under, um, SEQA Exemption Section, Section Fifteen Three-One-Seven. If you have any further questions, the Ag Department is here today. And that concludes the presentations of the first item.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Board have any questions, comments? Is there any public comment regarding this item?
Mr. Bardley is available online.
Would he like to speak?
Let's see. Mr. Bardley, would you like to share?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, um, I'm at Bardley. I'm just here to support this, and I'd like to give my thanks to the chairman and the board for their consideration, and thanks to Gina and the Planning Department for all the work in the process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That'll bring it back to the board. Should I close the public hearing?
Say if there's no additional public comment, you can close.
I'll close public comment hearing. Bring it back to the board.
If there's, I mean, respectively, if there's no comment or anything. So moved.
Done it.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Passes five zero. We'll move on to item number seventeen. This is five zero. We'll move on to item number seventeen.
Item seventeen, ordinance planning. One, find project exempt from CEQA. Two, authorize summary publication in a brief property description. Three, conduct a public hearing. And four, adopt an ordinance amending the zoning of APNs zero five two, zero one seven, zero eight eight. And zero five two, zero one seven, zero nine four from agricultural to agricultural preserve. To Edward William Bardley and Jen- Jennifer Lauren Van Bardley. Trustees of the Bardley Family Trust due to the establishment of an agricultural preserve and Williamson Act contract number three nine four totaling. Two hundred fifty-two point four two acres.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing.
So second part is to amend the zoning of this property from uh, A one, general agriculture to AP agriculture preserve. Um, the purpose of the ag preserve zone is to protect and preserve lands for intensive agriculture and ranching production. Agriculture preserve zoning applies to lands for which a Williamson Act contract has been executed. The ag preserve zone is compatible with the general plan land use designation of resource production. The parcel being two hundred and fifty-two point four two acres meets the minimum forty acre parcel size in the ag preserve zone. And this ag operation is consistent uh, consists of cattle grazing. Which is classified as an agriculture natural resource land use. And further defined by code as animal production, which is a permitted use in the AP zone. Specific findings that the zoning amendment is consistent with the general plan are outlined in your draft res- uh, draft ordinance in your packet. And on October ninth, uh, during a notice public hearing. Uh, your Planning Commission voted unanimously uh, to recommend approval of the zoning amendment upon establishment. Of the ag preserve and the Williamson Act contract.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
Oh, I'm gonna just make a comment. Um, you know, the preservation of uh. Our ag lands inside Calaveras is crucial to preserving our rural characteristics and uh, we appreciate. The Bardley uh, Family Trust moving forward uh, in in the fashion that they have and uh. What a beautiful area. To to have a ranch like that, so, yeah. Thank you.
Is there any public comment regarding this item?
We have no online public comment.
Did Mister Bardley drop off?
No, he's still here.
Okay. Does he want, wish to say anything more?
Mister Bardley, would you like to say anything else?
Uh, no further comment, but I will agree with the uh, the chairman that the area is beautiful and thank everybody again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can, you can keep the gavel for right now. So moved.
Sorry. Duck it. Do we close? Sorry.
I've got to close the public, yeah. Close the public hearing.
So moved.
Duck it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes five zero. Thank you. We'll move on now to item number eighteen, Matthew Burke.
So I'm sorry, am I reading eighteen and nineteen together?
Yeah.
If they're going to be presented and considered together, then yeah, please read both. Thank you.
Thank you.
Both eighteen and nineteen together.
So we can vote at the same time?
Uh, yes, we'll take both items together. Public comment will be and the public hearing will be for both items. And then the board can vote for both at both times, but the clerk should go ahead and read both items.
Yes, thank you.
Item eighteen, resolution planning. One, find a project exempt from CEQA. Two, conduct a public hearing. And three, adopt a resolution establishing Williamson Act contract number three nine five for the total of. One hundred thirty-two point three one acres for Cherie Garamendi Aguilar. Trustee of the Cherie Garamendi Aguilar Declaration of Trust, Celeste Christine Bittler. Garamendi, Robert C. Garamendi and Christine Anne Bittler. Item nineteen, ordinance planning. One, find project exempt from CEQA. Two, authorize summary publication and a brief property description. Three, conduct a public hearing. And four, adopt an ordinance amending the zoning of APN zero four eight, zero two, zero two. Zero nine five from general ac- agricultural to agricultural preserve for Cherie Garamendi Aguilar. Trustee of the Cherie Agar- Garamendi Aguilar Declaration of Trust. Celeste Christine Bittler, Garamendi, Robert C. Garamendi and Christine Anne Bittler. Due to the establishment of an agricultural preserve and Williamson Act contract number three nine five totaling one hundred thirty-two point three one acres.
Thank you, and I'll open the public hearing.
It's a mouthful, isn't it?
Sometimes.
I think Stacy's gonna speak more words than I will. Um, on July twenty-eighth, we received California Land Conservation application from Robert Garamendi and his family. Proposing to enter one legal parcel of a hundred and thirty-two point three one acres of land into an agriculture preserve. And establish Williamson Act contract three nine five. The property is located on the southwest corner of Camp La Seco and Watertown Roads near uh, near. Intersection uh, near Camp La Seco. Um, just to summarize the findings, um, this application meets the minimum requirements. Uh, to it, which is to be eligible for a contract. Um, the application is consistent with the general plan and applicable provisions of Title seventeen. Uh, just as previously stated in the other application, this uh, parse property as well as is designated. By the county general plan as resource production. Um, the ag preserve zone is compatible uh, with the resource production land use designation. Uh, animal production is a permitted use in the ag reserve zone. And the property meets the minimum forty acre um. Uh, parcel size consistent with the general plan and the zoning. Proposed um, uh, proposed operations meet the minimum requirement set forth in Resolution seventy-five four eighty-nine. Uh, which is necessary to establish the ag preserve and contract. Um, the Ag Advisory Committee as well as your county Planning Commission both recommend. The Board of Supervisors establish this contract and approve the zoning amendment. Um, meeting the minimum gross annual um, income from production, they've reported. A total of twenty thousand dollars annually. The feasibility study conducted by our farm advisor indicates the land is capable of producing a hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-two cents per acre annually. Um, at a hundred and thirty-two point three one acres, this property is not less than one hundred acres, which meets the minimum. This proposal is consistent with the surrounding zoning and land use, which is primarily agriculture and open space. Um, East Bay mud controls a great, uh, probably the majority of the land around that um, area. It is all watershed surrounding the party reservoir and is leased out for cattle grazing. Um, other large acres uh, also consists of livestock grazing. Larger residential parcels um, are involved in animal keeping of such. Being horses and generally smaller livestock. There is a considerable amount of land south of this property, which is uh, industrial and that is all currently vacant. Um, the product, this project is again categorically exempt from CEQA under section fifteen three one seven. And also again, specific findings that the zoning amendment is consistent with the general plan are outlined in your draft. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Any public comments regarding this item?
We have no online public comment.
With that, I'll bring it back to the board. Oh wait, hang on, sorry. Close the public hearing.
Uh, so.
None of Garamendi's on the line?
Yeah, I don't think so.
Okay.
That that name sounds familiar is Bob Garamendi, his daughters and. Um, so I make the motion for motion to approve items eighteen and nineteen both. Okay. I'll move items eighteen and nineteen.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes five zero. Gina, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You did approve of that, right, Al?
Of course.
Huh? It is, it is.
Uh, supervisors announcements in compliance of government code, section five three two, three two point three D. Board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of the local agency and may make other announcements or report out.
Thank you.
Um, I want to thank Sierra Hope and. The students here today, uh, you know, showing their interest in. County leadership. Um. You know, a story from an elder in McCollum Hill, Mister Phil McCartney back in the day when he was in high school during the uh, nineteen sixties. The Board of Supervisors did a program where uh. Leadership in the different schools like student council, uh, taking leadership programs and everything. They took a ride around with, you know, the respective supervisors throughout their districts. Um, you know, talk government, s- saw, saw, saw the area. And I, I think it's great that you brought them here, but uh, you know, maybe a thought in the future. Um, working with the high schools, respective other schools and everything else, you know. Those who are interested in leadership or, you know. That type of thing, maybe we could consider as a board doing something. To, to the, that level of the future, but you know, it's just an idea. Yeah, and I mean, Phil McCartney, he, he, he told well, so I mean, uh. You know, with the, the Irish way, so.
Thank you.
Um, yes, and thank you for showing and coming. Not one of you fell asleep and not one of you just, good job.
Astute.
There'll be a test later on about everything that's went on, so. Extra, you'll get extra credit for it. Uh, uh, yes, I'll be attending on Thursday, oh, tomorrow night, I'll be attending the cog meeting. Um, here, if we're not, if we're gonna be able to have it here, I, yes, we will, okay. And then um, I will be attending the wagon trail ribbon cutting on Thursday. Um, looking forward to that. And that's all I have.
Okay, I got a lot. Um, on Saturday, yes. Saturday I attended the Firewise event, um, but later on in the day, so I didn't miss um, Supervisor Hubbardie. But I'm so sad, it's happy not to have multiple county supervisors mingling at the same event. Um. Uh, for, it was a very well turnout um, event with vendors. Um, and I think it was um, a great first event for this. Um, the, I didn't write down the dates, but the last two weeks have been kind of busy. I attended two events. Um, one was the in-person, the ATO TP. Um, public meeting at the cog. Um, I did have uh, my sidekick in tow and she was very um. She was very interested in the maps and she pointed out some areas that um, needed to be considered with some stickers. She kept this thoroughly entertained. I think she was the only public member. Um, and then the other was online, um, which was the short range transit plan. Um, I would encourage the rest of my colleagues um, to really take a look at that. Um, it will be coming, a draft will be coming in front of the cog December sixth. Is that the first Wednesday? Whatever that first Wednesday is in December, I believe it's the sixth, um. Uh, cause the. Cog CDA, CTA will be having to really look at um, what transit will look like in the future. Um, please remember, you know, that it is funded by federal dollars. Um, so you do have to get creative, um, as the new administration is changing the way that federal dollars come down to local jurisdictions. Um, the other, um, I too will be attending the cog CTA meeting tomorrow. And then Wednesday, along with Supervisor Hubbardie, um, will be speaking at the wagon trail ribbon event. And then on the twentieth, we have a LAFCO meeting. I think originally, if anyone saw the calendar, it's supposed to be the seventeenth, we moved it to the twentieth. Um, and so we will, and we will be meeting here on the twentieth at six P M. Um, and that is all I have that I can remember.
First Wednesday in December is the third.
Okay, why did I think the sixth? Okay, yeah, the third, whatever the, sorry, yes, thank you for correcting me. I don't know why I got the sixth. Oh, that's because that CSAT, huh? CSAT conference, I had them flipped. Yeah.
Uh, Mister Chair, can I just have another place here? Um, since we don't know what's going on with the federal government and the SNAP programs going on that Marcos had brought to us and talked to us about. Um, would, would the board be interested in bringing back something on the twenty-fifth? Um, put together by uh, Teresa and the CEO of donating some money to the food bank, local food bank. Uh, Resource Connection, uh, if, if it continues the way it is. You, you, the predictions are even if they agreed tomorrow, it would take another two to three, four weeks before. The money would start becoming and the food would be available. So is the board interested in, in having uh, her do that?
I, I am, my question is, can we wait two and a half weeks?
Um.
Teresa can. Yeah, so um, according to Mister Menos, there will be at least some partial payment to folks for this month. So I think two weeks is.
All right.
Okay, but I do anticipate that if it has not been resolved by then. That it's going to be a very difficult holiday season for a number of our families, so I think it would be.
That, that's true because Thanksgiving and.
Yes, it's two days later.
Could we um, or could we open it not just to Resource Connection? Because um, I would like to open up more of my district and. So support.
We were looking at um, doing a fairly large donation to the food banks since they do serve the entire.
Multiple food banks?
Um, if there are multiple food banks, if the board um, could provide contacts for those organizations. Then we could certainly put together something that would cover um, the food banks located throughout the county so that there's multiple. Um, access points for families.
Are we looking at other avenues such as with a public benefit finding such as general fund dollars or something else in another area, not just our supervisor accounts?
So a number of um, counties have declared it an emergency because of the food insecurity within their counties. So we were anticipating that the board may want to do something similar to that. And access the emergency funding that we have set aside for emergencies impacting Calaveras County. So we would be proposing to um, take that funding from the emergency fund in order to fund. Um, the food bank program.
Um. Pity back off then, from my understanding with utilities and other services, um, acta is out of money. Um, and so is I, um. Could we also get what that would look like in that presentation? Um, for example, Sierra Hope, you know, said today that they also, they don't just do the money, they also do utilities. Um, and so is that something we could, um. Have part of the discussion going forward, um. I, I know I'm making it probably more difficult for you, but I just, I guess where I'm going is if. Yes, there's food, but is there a way to also support those organizations to keep the lights on?
So we were primarily looking at the food insecurity within the county because that is something that flows through the county generally. Um, the utility programs are generally funded through, of course, AdCA, PG&E, there are other um, agencies that have that funding available to them.
But if they don't have that funding, if it's out.
It's, that's a very large problem. I'm not sure that the county can fund every potential issue that. Is out there and it's unfortunate that this is hitting at this time of the year. Um, I, I feel like we can do what we can do. It's not like we have, as you know, our resources aren't limitless, so.
May, may, may I say that uh, us alleviating the food issue may be the scenario that. alleviates the other. As, as it's a domino effect, although there are cases where people are losing out on that also.
I would guess you're just thinking of not. If. Not completely restricting the fund to food, I guess.
I think that the, if, if it were the board's um, direction, um, to the extent that the board was. Giving funds to an organization like Sierra Hope that does both, I think the board could. Not, not make it as restrictive to that particular organization and then if that's how they wanted to utilize it, they could sort of decide how they were gonna do that. Within their existing program.
Yes, I just want to make sure.
That would be part of the conversation we could have as this item comes forward, so we've. Yeah.
Okay, okay, that's what I was getting, thank you.
Good call.
Um, I had one more thing, I'm sorry, um. Uh, I missed it, but Supervisor Hubbardie did provide me um, with some documentation regarding the strategic plan meeting the other week. Um, Julie's probably gonna kill me right now. Um, I was wondering if it might be uh, good to. Um I was wondering if it might be uh good to bring some of those timelines in front of the entire Board. Um because I know some of us have been working um on some of those projects and have. Maybe some different expectations um and assumptions of direction. And I think it might be wise to bring it back and clarify some of that direction from this Board and. Um. Let the rest of the Board know what those timeline do without um breaking some kind of burnout violation.
Uh in their defense, Brett did mention that this was a very sort of worst case scenario on those dates. But I agree, I think it needs to come before everybody and we need to discuss it.
Yeah, yes.
So if we could do that, that would be great.
Thank you.
Yes. Supervisor Andal.
Um I don't have much announcements. I support what my other supervisors have said. Um and I wanted to share that um Calaveras Mariposa Community Action Agency is actively. Trying to get ahead of this as well. We have a brand new director. Um Supervisor Hubbard and I both sit on that and believe we're meeting next week, so hopefully we can.
Say the fourteenth, but.
Get some traction.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Katie, I I have to look, yeah. Yeah. She's. I'm gonna say Katie, but uh hang on.
So many names.
We we haven't met yet. Oh, okay, yeah. You. I'm just. Give me a second, I'm just being. Well, Christie Moore, Christie Moore. Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, I gotta go back.
Yes.
Gay just reminded me.
Uh-oh.
Um. Would this Board also consider bringing back um the discussion of camera? I have discussed it with County Council. Um there are, I, you know, we're appointed to Board to represent the entirety of the county. There are some things that are coming up that um both myself and Supervisor Andal are, we are. Hesitant to respond to the greater of the JPA. And we would like the rest of the Board's feedback on how to um cast their votes going forward.
Wow. I just make the decision for us.
I'm not so easy on this one. Uh so however that looks like.
Sure.
Um.
Yeah, we could certainly um, we could agenda something for one of the next couple of meetings.
I say, can you, let's get it all done this year. We have two more meetings?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
And I think this is, might be time sensitive.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can, we can put a discussion on for um our next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm done.
Don't be false. Supervisor Andal, anything else? Super, I just, on the twenty-ninth, I attended via Zoom the CCWD FERC licensing meeting and then with the COG with Supervisor Andal. On the thirtieth, thank you Supervisor Fallendorf for setting up the meeting with the Forest Service. Um I met with Supervisor Wood uh Woodrow from Alpine County and Andy. Um and they're gonna be needing some help with the um campgrounds next year. We see two hundred and fifty thousand people in our campgrounds in the Upper Highway Four corridor. Um on the thirty-first, I just want to put a big shout out to the county and the costumes. And I know that our CEO was a judge this year and what an amazing event that was. And just to see Doug chasing Brett around as a dragon and Shrek, it was hilarious. It was pretty darn funny. Um.
Okay.
And then on the first, uh Firewise, uh R C did an amazing job in pulling this together in six weeks, which was incredible. There were tons of vendors, great information. And if nothing else, the collaboration between all of the agencies just being in the one room, it it was fantastic. Um I want to give a shout out, I I went up to Hinner House to celebrate their fifth year. Uh they opened during COVID, which was ridiculous, um and they've just gone from success to success and they have international and national awards. Uh Day of the Dead hugely hugely popular. Um again, I think most of our friends that come from the Central Valley to celebrate with us feel safe here, uh which is wonderful. Um and then a shout out to P A TV in Caliscaris, they were at the museum until eleven o'clock on Saturday night and we were trying to channel. And I was very lucky in that I didn't, I wasn't able to channel anything. It was a little bit, yeah, but no, they had an amazing time and they filmed it and it's gonna be something that they're gonna bring back annually, so. Uh shout out to them. And that's it. Supervisor, I mean Supervisor, CEO?
So I did want to piggyback on your comments about the Halloween event that was held on Friday. Our cheer committee was incredible. I know Stacy sits on that as well as Candace Molina from my office and Mark Kinslick. They did an amazing job of putting together a very good event for all of our employees. And I feel like the team building and morale from that was incredible and the employees did just an over the top job. On all of it, so it was fantastic. So thank you, Stacy, I appreciate it.
Stacy, you want to say anything?
I just, it was an amazing event. The morale for the whole Government Center was amazing. Um and also just to piggyback on that as well, our office clerk recorders, we did a raffle basket to raise monies for the food bank and we raised nine hundred dollars. So we were able to give that check to the Resource Connection on Friday, along with other um monies donated from other departments. So, yes.
County Council? Susan? Holly? Okay, super. I think we're done.